Welcome to the City of Palm Coast City Council Business Meeting. Today is Tuesday, June the 6th, 2023. It is now 6:00 PM and we are in the community wing of City Hall. I would ask you all now to please stand and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance. Following the pledge, you are welcome to remain standing for a moment of silence to reflect, meditate, pray, or pause for a moment.
I, the United States of America, am in the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Alvin.
Present.
Vice Mayor Danko.
Here.
Councilmember Hyder.
Here.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Planteiri.
Present.
All members are present.
Very good. We will now move to the agenda item, which is public participation. In order for city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns, please fill out a comment card with your contact information. The comment cards can be found on the table, near the agendas, or available from Communications' Marketing Director seated in the back of the room. Anyone wishing to speak may approach the podium, provide their name, and may speak for up to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the mayor. Be concise and to the point, avoid delaying or interrupting the proceedings, and do not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments. Any person who becomes disorderly may be barred from making any additional comments and may be removed. With that, I would invite members of the public to come and make comment to myself and City Council. Please come forward.
Ed Fuller, Palm Coast. Good evening. Honorable Mayor David Alvin, Vice Mayor Eddie Brankino.
Brankino?
Brankino, God. I got him on my mind, I apologize. Vice Mayor Danko. Don't take the time away from me on that, please. Honorable Councilwoman Teresa Carley-Patieri. Honorable Councilwoman Kathy Hyder. Honorable Councilwoman Nick Clufus. I want to say, preface my remarks, but I really need to go quick here. I want to thank the surviving veterans who on D-Day sacrificed their lives so we could be here today. And that's why I wore this tie, in memory of my father and all my uncles. And all the living veterans are here. I want to do this quickly, so I only have three minutes. I know the City of Palm Coast hosted two events. Touch a Truck in the City Hall and Memorial Day Observance at Heroes Park. I had never attended a Touch a Truck event before and was overwhelmed by the sheer crowd. My unscientific methods, I'd say they're between 5,000 and 8,000 people there. A convoy of strollers accompanied by doting parents, grandparents, and puppies traveling on the perimeter of City Hall, grandparents as well. Added the family-friendly event, added to the family event. I was in awe of the many eclectic trucks, I'm sorry, that were displayed at the city. It was if I attended a monster truck jam in Orlando, except minus the $75 admission. You know, they said the difference between men and boys is size of their toys. Well, unbelievable. It was just a super event. And I want to thank all the employees who gave up their holiday to engage our citizens and show the great respect. And it's not a job to them, it's a career. The other event that was hosted was the Memorial Observance of Our Fallen Heroes. And I must say, I was taken aback by the solemnity of that open-air cathedral that we call Heroes Park. The dignity that everyone showed to our fallen heroes. And to you, Ms. Hyder, for your fallen hero, thank you for his service. Thank everyone for their giving up their weekend to make our city a better. This is a community of character, and it was certainly so in those two events. I want to God bless you all. God bless this city. God bless this county. God bless Florida. God bless the United States. And thank you for all the service that you've rendered our city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Let me invite the next speaker, please.
My name is Jules Kwiatkowski. I'm a 31-year resident of Palm Coast, a lifetime member of the Palm Coast Fire Police. Many of you don't realize, but on this day, June 6th, is the 25th anniversary of the wildfires of 98. I'd like to tell you my story. I was there. As I ride past the greenery and new houses, you would never believe that all your life, 25 years ago, today, June 6th, 1998, fires destroyed 73 homes in Palm Coast. It was Saturday, June 6th, 1998, around 12:30 PM, that I received a call from the Palm Coast Fire Department, rural fire police, to report to Seminole Woods Parkway for a smoky condition and controlled traffic. I started to get my gear on, but my wife didn't want me to go. I just had an operation in April. I told her I would just go and see how bad the smoke was and be right back. I was there 36 hours. I arrived at Seminole Woods Parkway and saw traffic was moving very slowly because of the brush fire that was causing a lot of smoke. It was later found out that the fire was started by some hunters out target shooting at a camp near the Flag River Airport. At 1:00 PM, the order was given to close Seminole Woods Parkway to everyone but fire personnel. We then staged ourself at Seminole Woods Parkway and 100, where you could see puffs of black smoke. Around this time, homeowners started arriving and wanted to get into their homes. Tempers were flaring and the people started to argue with the deputies because they wouldn't let them go down to their homes. The smoke started to get very bad and somebody said, "There goes another home." When the fire was over, there were 23 homes lost or damaged by fire and 1,630 acres lost. Al Gore, Vice President at the time, came to tour the area. President Clinton declared Fager County a disaster area. Governor Charles also came to the area. All was calm for about three weeks, your normal brush fire, because we didn't have any rain in quite some time. Then on June 26th, 1998, all hell broke loose. We had 46 fires all at once, mostly from lightning strikes, and all was calm again for eight days. Then on July 2nd, 1998, fire started in St. John's County and was burning underground, flared up on west of Route 1. It went to Mantazza Woods down the B section and jumped 95 to the F and C section. This was called a Danson's Fire. Our house was destroyed. One house was destroyed, but the next one was untouched. Thank you, sir.
Jules, thank you for your many years of dedicated service and thank you for reminding us of those days. Thank you. Will the next speaker please approach?
My name's Howard Pfeifer. And the 25th anniversary of the 98 wildfires, I'll recount in my memory because I fought them. The first Monday night of June of 98, there was a violent lightning storm that went through Palm Coast. The next day, a fire broke out off of Pepperdine Drive in the P section. We responded there and found that it was in a dry swamp and that the fire had burned five to six feet down in the ground. In order to stop this fire from getting into the residential section, we had a track hoe dig a moat around the fire and we flooded it with water from the canal behind Wal-Mart. After that, the fire in Seminole Woods broke out. It was a 95-degree day. The wind was blowing between 25 and 30 miles an hour, and it started south of Seminole Woods and rapidly spread through the community. There were a lot of evacuations that had to be made by our deputies and our firefighters to get the people out because of the fast-moving fire. And telephone poles were burning off and falling across the road, preventing fire apparatus from getting to some of the homes. The smoke was so thick that one woman trying to evacuate drove through somebody's backyard and got stuck in their garden in the rear, which we had to get her out. Next was the Ware Fire, which came from the west side of US-1, about seven miles out, and swept in through the Mantazza Woods area. And that fire, again, banked down with smoke so you couldn't see in front of you, just like the fog. And we lost some houses there, but one thing that we did learn and do is with our small trucks, we could run through the backyards of homes because there were no fences there and protect the homes between the homes and the woods. And that worked out real well. So in all, I think in 98, we lost a total of 67 houses, 20 in Seminole Woods, 47 in the Mantazza Woods, P section, and the F section. And obviously, the fire jumped I-95, and we had to have a handle on that. Since then, we have a firefighting helicopter and we have brush fire gear to protect us, which we did not have then. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and likewise, thank you for all of those years of service and all that we've learned. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers Mike Martin from Mantazza Woods. Mr. Mayor, I wonder if you could comment on the future of the utility bills that we're facing? In 2021, when the city put out a request for proposals to replace Waste Pro as the trash service, we ended up going to court and it was adjudicated that the city had not done the RFP correct, so we were forced to create an emergency contract for, I think, a little over one year for Waste Pro. That resulted in a 47% increase in the trash fees. Now that we have a new contractor, I wonder if you would answer my question of what's going to happen to the trash fees? Are they going to be lower, back to where they were before they screw up with Waste Pro and the court case, or are they going to be continued to increase from here? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker? Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. Can I touch this?
Please, yes.
My name is Carol Brassfield. I'm a retired nurse. I live at 5 Waymouth Lane. My husband and I moved here to Palm Coast in 2019. Life was not as crowded four years ago, so I need your help. During Memorial Day weekend, we had our daughter and granddaughter here for a visit. We were helping our granddaughter learn to ride her bike because the roads here are However, on Saturday, a large box truck came speeding down Wayanoke Lane. I heard it coming and revving up its engine. I started waving my arms and pointing towards my granddaughter, and they didn't slow down, so I got in the middle of the road to slow them down and make them come to a stop. I was going to get their license plate number, and there was none. But this is a neighborhood, not I-95. I should not have to have an adrenaline rush with speeding cars or pizza drivers in our quiet little neighborhood. I have written a letter to my council representative about the speeding issues, and he invited me to come and talk. He agreed with me. I have two solutions. I'm not just going to give a problem, I'm going to give two solutions. One are speed humps, which are not approved very, not many of you approve of. The other is hiring traffic officers to slow the traffic down in Palm Coast. They would be writing traffic tickets for speeding and can make an impression on people's pockets and insurance. I wouldn't, I cannot imagine me saying this, but a tax increase would be acceptable until money starts coming in from the tickets. These men and women would only be working on traffic issues and help the Sheriff's Department on traffic accidents. But I see speeding every day I get out on the streets. Ignoring this issue of speeding is telling me our lives do not matter. Lowering the speed limit signs won't really work. There needs to be speed humps or traffic control personnel. Anything less is unacceptable. And, by the way, the stop sign down from our house, you all can come and get it because nobody uses it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there another speaker that would like to address City Council at this time?
Good afternoon, Andrew, Palm Coast. Hope you guys are doing well. So usually, I'm here to make a request to the council about reclassifying chickens to be recognized as backyard or domestic chickens, but I think at this point, I've performed what I call good faith attempt, and I look forward to the workshop in June. Some people have told me that this is, you know, it's going to be a long shot and it won't happen. And I don't want to count my chickens before they hatch, but I do have faith in the council members and I look forward to the experience and, you know, the outcome, so. But I would like to talk about, you know, kind of what the young lady was talking about before me was, what is the role of constituency here in the town? So all over the nation, you see people getting frustrated with their elected officials. You know, obviously, we do a good job here for the most part. It's happening in blue and red counties, just over all kinds of different issues. People are often feeling not represented when it comes to things that matter most to them. So I'm here to advocate for the statement. So it says, "Build a cooperative and trusting relationship between the city and the community." So if that sounds familiar, it's because it comes from the Palm Coast Goals for the strategic planning. Let's see. So what does it mean to have a trusting relationship? So in my opinion, it means to allow people to determine, you know, the town that we want to live in. So I think that I'd like to see, I'd like to advocate for more sentiment for the constituency. So, you know, I've been watching conversations online and I've seen people frustrated about the rapid growth of the town, and I've been experiencing it as well. So I'm just wondering if there's something that can be done about this. I've heard a range of answers from, you know, fear of litigation, this is, you know, people's land and they can do what they want, and, you know, we need more rooftops in town. You know, I know the city's 50-year plan, so I also understand that plans can be changed. I think today, we're talking about changing some of the planned green space to convert it to areas that are going to be residential. So whatever the case is, I do see some alarms with the overgrowth in the city. You know, look at the 100-plus people that came to the meeting the other week about, you know, the field conditions and chatter online about, you know, people just not feeling the growth. So I don't, you know, I don't know what can be done or what position that we have as a constituency, but I'm here to advocate for that, to the council. I'd be glad to be a part of any, you know, groups of anything like that to plan for it, but I think it's something that is needed just from what I see across the city. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker that would like to address City Council at this time? Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Josh Fabian. So I am here to talk about chickens, and I have been asked if we are serious, and I am not yoking when I say that, yes, I will get chickens. So every time we come and when we've talked to other people, it seems like the main issues that people address are noise issues or think of the children issues, they're going to bring predators. So I looked it up, and for chickens, the loudest that a hen ever gets is 70 decibels, and that's from two feet away at like the exact moment that they're laying an egg, which happens every one to two days. And obviously, they would be inside of a chicken coop, so that'd be muffled, and I think you should probably have to have a fenced-in yard. And so that's like six foot tall or whatever they are. And so from like 20 feet away, that'd be 50 decibels or less, which is a normal conversation volume. A dog is 70 to 100 decibels when they bark. A lawnmower is 90 decibels when they bark. And when I go outside of my backyard, I hear all of the birds and other wildlife that is much louder than chickens are, because chickens just kind of walk around and bawk-bawk. They don't make a lot of noise, except for at the exact moment when they're laying an egg. Then I think of the children one. Kids love children, they like, kids love chickens, they like to feed them, hold them, chase them around the yard, do all those things. I mean, I'm surprised that no one's mentioned that alligators would come and eat your chickens. I thought that would be the first thing that everyone would say, which, I mean, is a possibility, but if you have a dog, an alligator could come up into your property and eat your chicken. So, or eat your dog or anything in there. So that's just kind of their living life is not, you know, there is challenges. I don't think that's that big of a deal that there are wild animals out there. Now, something interesting happened. I recently, with someone else, and a city council member was on the radio to discuss different things, and chickens was one of the things, and we were told if we don't like the rules here, that we should move away. Which, so does all of this meaningless? If, so every time someone comes up and is like, "Hey, I don't like this, we should change this," is the official stance of the board that we should just move away, that we can't change rules, we can't have opinions on how things should work? That me owning my house here, having property here, moving my family here, that doesn't matter? These are the rules, this is the way it's going to be, so let's just move? And I was told that maybe we could petition the government to give us land, that we could start some kind of communist chicken co-op, and then we can throw all the chickens off in the gulags at the end of town, and that's, it just doesn't make sense. That doesn't seem like, that doesn't seem like what the city has. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker that would like to address City Council at this time? Yes, sir.
I have three issues tonight. We brought this issue up in the past with no resolution. Why is it that city workers, I don't care what position they hold in the city, when they want to come into this building and they want to come into this particular room to attend this meeting, they don't have to go through a metal detector like I do and like everybody else in this room does? And I question why. And I was told that the city workers have signed an agreement that they won't bring any weapons into the building. I guess if you go back and you check every mass shooting that we've ever had, I don't think that the shooter checked with the store owner, the company, the school, the movie theater, and told them that he was going to bring a gun in and blow people away. So we need to seriously address that because I don't think that any city worker from the mayor down is not able to do anything. My second issue was residents come here and they ask a question, and the mayor even admitted in the beginning in his comments that if he's not sure, all those kind folks that are sitting back there, those are the directors, those are the people that run the city. Why then, if the mayor has a question, well, I'm sorry, if a resident has a question and he asks the mayor, and the mayor's not sure, and the council's not sure, and the attorney's not sure, I'm quite sure, those people sitting back there, those directors, they're the best of the best. They're like the all-stars of the scene. Ask them a question, let them come up here and answer the question for the residents, so the resident doesn't have to keep coming back. Now, finally, the, we brought this up in the past, and I've been told, yeah, yeah, yeah. And as of today, we still don't have a metal detector on the other side of this building. So granted, we have a guard there, and he checks you when you come in, but you can go anywhere in the building. You can go to the city manager's office, you can go to the mayor's office, you can go to any place in the city you want, because now you're in the building. Why then don't we have metal detectors? Because people walk in and out all the time. And there's a lot of people who are not happy with something, and they're coming here and they're yelling and screaming because they don't want to come here and be embarrassed raising a question. So I seriously think that something has to be done. So I'll just sit down here and I'll wait for an answer.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker that would like to address City Council at this time? Yes, sir.
Nathan Phelps, Palm Coast, one of the Palm Coast Party Fowl. Yeah, so last time I was here, you know, we come every month now and talk about trying to get chickens legalized for the backyard. And last time, I feel like I wasted some time telling roughly a dozen grade-A chicken jokes. But, you know, I don't want to make a joke out of this. This is a venue that we truly value and we are grateful for the opportunity to speak. You've given us free range to say what we care about, and we feel uncaged, and otherwise, we would feel like we don't even have lips and we're wandering around with our heads cut off. So last time, I never really took the time to sink my fingers in. We did recently get to speak with Vice Mayor Danko on the radio. We met a girl, her name's Corlin, she had a pullet named Moonlight, and I learned that a pullet is a young hen. So things, I'm learning a lot in this process. And just thinking about this and all the benefits that she said children raising chickens truly have, I'd like to share a few nuggets that I've been thinking about. Children bond with chickens personally. You could tell just in the example of sitting there in the room with a child in her pullet that she was happy with this chicken. And she said they have personalities and they bond. And then taking care of animals, children learn responsibility, and as we all know, chicks dig men who cook breakfast. Right, guys? So, and, you know, over the last three months, four months that we've been showing up here, you've seen the party foul here. This is our fourth time. We're just a couple guys that met at church, we watched the AFC Championship game together and started talking about chicken. While the Chiefs completely knocked the Bengals out, they lost their opportunity to lose two Super Bowls in a row. We know that would have happened. Joe Burrow threw, what, one touchdown, two interceptions, or five sacks? That was going to be over. There's no way you can not beat Patrick Mahomes on one ankle minus three receivers and a quality defensive back and think you're going to beat the Eagles. So the Chiefs did some mercy there, and in the process, we talked about the benefit that we would have if we owned chickens economically, health-wise, environmentally, and so we've been up here talking about that every month, why we want that. And last week, we met Eric Olson from the Palm Coast Chicken Alliance, who I guess has similar goals but is taking the more political route, letter-writing, trying to get it on the ballot. So while we don't have necessarily the same approach, we have the same goal, and I feel like we are yoked together to carry this cause, and we are going to pull it together. So, you know, since then, we've also had a couple news interviews, the three of us, and then we got to be on the radio with Vice Mayor Danko, and I very much appreciate the time and your attempts to keep taxes low. And I'm looking into the future, but I don't want to put the carton before the horse. You know, we know how politics go, sometimes things get presented and then someone might pull it away from us. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Is there another speaker that would like to address City Council? Yes, sir.
First day of trash last Thursday was great, everything went nice. Monday was a fiasco. We were told in the observer to put our recycling out in a clear plastic bag if we didn't have a bin, which was done. They came along, dumped the trash, put the recycling in the trash bucket, and left the trash, put the recycling in the trash bucket and left it. Went across the street, took their recycling and left their trash behind. Something is not right. Needs to be fixed. Item two. Three years ago, I asked Barbara to go out from code inspection on our marine boat and take a look from the canals because she says that she needs permission to go on people's property to do code enforcement. So I recently asked her again. She says she's working on it. I sent messages, emails to several of you, and they were never answered to go out for an hour or an hour and a half because you'll see plenty. There's more violations than you can count. Vice President, Vice Mayor Danko went out on his own. He couldn't believe what he saw. It needs to be attention. There's places where they have new developments with no aprons around it, no sand, it's just flowing into canals in the rainstorms. Every rainstorm. I sent in a couple, few of them fixed, the rest of them have not, or none at all. The contractors knock them down. They don't care. They just walk all over. Number three, electrical inspection. Put an air conditioning system in back in January. The outside compressors have a quick connect switch so the serviceman can turn the power off to it and work on it. 30 amps, which is what's required. The indoor units never had switches on it because under National Fire Code 72, there's supposed to be a three-foot opening in front of your circuit breaker board so that you can go in and turn it off. A lot of us don't have that. Everything's piled in the garage. And now the manufacturer's putting a switch on the air handler so that you can turn it off. That switch is rated at 60 amps. It's not a breaker. It's just a switch so they can turn it off and service it without getting electrocuted. I had mine inspected, and the inspector says, oh, I want a 60-amp circuit breaker on that. We have a 33 watt, a 33-amp heater in there of 8,000 watts. The systems are pulling 4 amp now because they're running on 24-volt DC instead of 110 save electricity, which would be 37 amps total on a 45-amp line. I am not putting a 60-amp breaker on a 45-amp line and have it heat it up in the wall like a heating element in an oven. Says, oh, we'll put a 60-amp, we'll inspect it, and then put the 45 back in. That's falsifying. I'm not going to do that either. So your two choices. We leave the thing open, we pass it the way it is, or we go to court. I'm not changing it to a 60-amp breaker and committing a fire hazard. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there another speaker that would like to address City Council at this time?
Yes, ma'am.
Charlene Palm Coast. I'd like to share a quote with you all from a man named Fisher Ames. He is the man who wrote the wording for the First Amendment. He said, "Not only should the Bible be in our schools, it should be the primary textbook of our schools." This is the person who chose the wording for the First Amendment, the same First Amendment that people are now using to prohibit the freedom of religion. The First Amendment was created to protect our freedom to worship God. Since the resolution to open in prayer failed to even make it to a vote, Councilmember Clufus suggested we use our three minutes to pray. So I'd like to use my remaining time to pray. Father, thank you for Palm Coast. Thank you for America. Thank you for freedom. Thank you that your hand has been on this nation since its founding. Forgive us for pushing you out of government, our schools, and every other institution. We invite you back to come lead us and guide us, just as our founders and forefathers asked for wisdom and guidance. We ask that you heal us, heal America from the brokenness. We pray that you would be with the mayor and the council members as they lead the city. We pray your protection over, your protection and blessing over Palm Coast. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address City Council at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment, and I will come to the dais and ask City Council members. Actually, I'll comment first. In my opening remarks, when we get to the agenda item of public comment, I do ask that everyone that is wanting to make a public comment, fill out a comment card. There's a reason for that. And the reason for that is so that our communications staff and city staff can respond, and as they do, to every comment that goes to them. So if you would please take the time to make them aware, some of your issues may be lengthy, some of them may require multiple departments, some of them may not be resolved in the form of instant gratification during a single meeting. So we do use the system of follow-up, and we follow this administrative procedure. Now, I would ask City Council members, is there anything specific that you would like to address? I would ask city manager to comment briefly on safety. I think that rises to the top of the discussion with regard to the arrangements that have been made on the City Hall side of the building over the last six or so months.
Yes, that'd be my pleasure, mayor. So we have instituted security measures above and beyond of what we have done previously, and we're actually requiring customers that have meetings to check in at the front desk and receive a visitor's check-in badge. And the second level of the building, you mentioned, I believe, I heard, city manager's office, that is a restricted level of City Hall. And then also, we have security and law enforcement in the vicinity of City Hall on a daily basis.
Thank you. And Mr. Reichman, I apologize. Bill Reichman is sitting in as a council this evening and has been a longstanding council attorney for many, many years and is doing us the honor of presenting tonight. Can you tell us just briefly what the carry rule is with regard to people coming into City Hall, just so it's clear? Because we had this episode a year ago, a year and a half ago.
The Florida statutes allow for the, for local government to place restrictions on the carry of a weapon in the portion of a government building where the governing body is having a session. And that's why you have the metal detectors for, in use here this evening, because this is the meeting of the governing body. And that is, the regulation of guns in the state of Florida is preempted to the state of Florida. Local governments do not have any discretion in the regulation of guns, so we follow that state statute. And so that is why we have the restrictions on the, on guns, on carrying guns into this building, into this room during the meeting of the city governing body, the City Council.
And on the other, on the other side, we do or we don't have a right to restrict?
Do not have a right to restrict them, but you can, you can use the common sense protections that were described by the city manager to respond if there was an emergency in the event that someone was, was making, you know, carrying a gun and then using it in improper fashion.
Thank you for clarifying that. And my last statement, I'll give you a crack at it, is it's not a question of whether it's the chicken or the egg that came first. The workshop absolutely will come first. And as I think one of the speakers noted, that workshop is scheduled. So that would be the appropriate time to move forward with that discussion. So with that, I'd ask City Council members, is there anything specifically you'd like to respond to this evening?
Just very quickly, I, I'm unaware. There was a speaker who made a comment. Somebody on council said if you don't like the way things are, leave. I'm on.
I can clarify that for you.
Okay.
Clarify that.
Because I'm unaware of that statement.
No, that was me, but that's not exactly what I said, and you know that. You were there. We were discussing all the options, and one of the options was, you can, you know, if Palm Coast doesn't give you what you want, you can certainly find another place that will. That's how that was expressed. Also, the offer that I suggested to you, and it was just an idea, it was a suggestion, that if we do not allow chickens to just be in our residential areas, perhaps the city, we do have some land, some of it we're not using, perhaps we could help you set up a chicken garden co-op of some sort that you would have to manage yourself.
So Vice Mayor, if I may, only because we've already agreed that this will be a workshop item, so if we could kind of hold those comments and...
These were comments I made on the radio already.
No, no, but, but...
I just wanted to clarify that.
But we can sort of concentrate them during that workshop item and visit that discussion.
Sure, absolutely.
Good. Does that answer your question?
But I just wanted to clarify my comments on the radio.
Does that answer your question?
And anybody can go back and listen to the podcast of that broadcast.
Okay. And I didn't, I didn't hear the broadcast. I wasn't aware. But I just want to say that I appreciate the citizens that come here, that, that make their comments. I welcome anybody to email me. While we don't always get back to you immediately because we don't know the answer to your question immediately. I think those who have emailed me, I've worked with city staff to get responses back to our residents. So I welcome the public sentiment and the public involvement, and we want all of our residents to be very happy here. And I think that our council works very hard at trying to achieve that.
Counselperson, any, any comment? Counselman Clufus?
Fisher Ames didn't believe in democracy. That's it.
Okay. And let me just conclude with this. For those of you in the audience and listening online that have not heard this before, the city's comprehensive plan, which was last updated some 20 years ago, is being opened up as part of our current strategic action plan. And over a two-year period, every member of the city of Palm Coast, every resident, will be invited to participate in a variety of formats to give their input so that we can clearly hear what it is the citizens of Palm Coast would like our city to look like both today and tomorrow. So that is upcoming. And I hope that each of you that is willing to come here and make public comment will participate in this very important exercise for the future. So with that, I will finally now close public comment, and I will now move to the agenda item, which is minutes from prior meetings. I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held on May the 16th, 2023. It was a business meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Councilperson Pontiaria, second by the Vice Mayor. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Does the clerk have to count? Similarly, I will ask for a motion for the special budget workshop meeting held on May the 23rd, 2023. Can I have a motion?
Motion made.
I have a motion to approve by Councilperson Pontiaria, second by Vice Mayor. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? Does the clerk have to count?
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you. We now move to the next item on the agenda, which is proclamations. We have two proclamations this evening. Please, come on. The first proclamation, folks were hesitant to come up. I don't know why. They should be extremely proud of the very hard work they've done for a very long time now. They're being recognized this evening. I won't belabor it, but they have formed a charitable organization which supports our local community in a variety of ways. And I, for one, can attest to the fact that they work at this every single day. So let me just go right to the proclamation. Whereas the city of Palm Coast residents have for decades been renowned for their service to others, a compassion immersed in generosity, goodwill, and kind-heartedness. And whereas one of our community's top-rated nonprofit organizations, the Tag v. Bear Foundation, was founded over seven years ago to provide support for children in need and to support programs that assist children facing adversities. And whereas the Tag v. Bear Foundation is the ultimate model of our benevolence in Palm Coast, providing more than $60,000 in product services and monetary contributions to local agencies such as Abundant Life Ministries, The Hope House, Angel Trees, SMA Foundation, Teens in Flight, and Flagler County Education Foundations, Stuff the Bus, and the Family Life Center. And whereas the lovable bear, Tag V, and his furry partner Rita, have become powerful symbols that for together achieving greatness in our community, reminding our citizens that offering just a small bit of themselves will make a huge difference in the lives of children dealing with challenging struggles. And whereas our entire Palm Coast community proudly unites with our Tag v. Bear Foundation to advocate for children, for our children as they can now be our most vulnerable young residents, as well as our most valuable blessings in the future. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Palm Coast, that June 9th, 2023, be officially designated as Tag v. Bear Foundation Recognition Day, signed by myself and the city clerk today. Now, just to cut some slack. I know the speaker does a lot of good work, but she gets very nervous in front of a crowd. So everybody play nice and let her speak.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor, and councilmen and women. We really appreciate the recognition. The reason I chose to speak, other than to just say thank you, is one of the things that we do is support our, our fellow foundations and, and centers. And, you know, we help each other in these communities. And I just want to point out, just so the community knows, our Family Life Center, who it's run by Trish Giacconi, and she's been doing it for years, and she does a wonderful job. And we support her. And I just want everyone to know that the Family Life Center, our domestic abuse organization, our rape crime...